Okay, I have six o'clock. Does everybody else have six o'clock? Alrighty, then I am going to have a roll call vote to start this meeting. Whoops, you muted.
Jonathan Schmidt here.
Boy, you can barely hear you. Can you be a little louder?
Yeah, Jonathan Schmidt here.
Okay, Shannon?
Shannon Dunham here.
Mayor?
Mayor LaChapelle here.
Marianne?
Marianne Goldstein here.
Marissa?
Marissa Cray here.
Lori?
Lori Garcia here.
Cynthia Kuzinski here. So, welcome to the August 18th School Committee Meeting. And we will start with announcements. Superintendent Leclerc, do you have any announcements?
Just a few, thank you. Good evening, everyone. I just want to let everyone know that we have been working under a waiver for school breakfast and lunch since March, and that it has allowed us to provide breakfast and lunch to any child in East Hampton that wanted it. And that waiver is set to end on August 31st. I'll be sending something out to families in my next logistical update, just to give everyone that heads up. The state has submitted to the federal government for a new waiver or an extension to go into this upcoming school year, but we have not received it yet. So, more information to come on that. And also, I wanted to let families know that they should be on the lookout for emails from the building principals in the next week or so for upcoming family forums. And of course, the school committee will be invited. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have correspondence?
We do not have correspondence, but we do have a gift.
Okay.
So, I would like to make a motion to accept with gratitude the generous monetary donation from Catherine Bannigan White.
Okay, do we have a second?
Can I just second that?
Thank you. Roll call vote, Jonathan?
Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Mayor?
Shannon Dunham, aye. Oh, sorry.
That's okay, that's fine. Oh, you're unmuted. Not a good signal. Start, Mayor LaChapelle, aye. Marianne?
Marianne Goldstein, aye.
Marissa?
Marissa Cray, aye.
Lori?
Lori Garcia, aye.
Cynthia Kuzinski, aye. Excellent. So, we're going to begin public speak. Again, if you can signal that you want to speak, I will write down your names. I will be scanning as we go along. And I, we're asking again that people hold it to two minutes, if they could. All right, so, right now, I see Nellie, and I see the Ellsworths. So, Nellie?
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Great, okay, thanks, committee. So, I just would like to join you. I'm Nellie Taylor. I am the president of the East Hampton Education Association, and I am coming to you tonight to applaud your vote to begin schooling remotely in East Hampton. As I'm hearing, that 70% of districts across the state are intending to return in a hybrid or a fully in-person model, which is absolutely horrifying. I am, I want to take a moment to acknowledge that East Hampton School Committee has decided to do the safe option, returning fully remote. We have seen the news out of Athol. If you haven't yet seen the news out of Athol recently, I think everyone should go and check that out. There were some, please excuse my child, I'm sorry. I'm speaking at the school committee, can you?
Hello?
Okay. So, the news out of Athol is extremely troubling. However, you know, my hope is that in East Hampton, we won't be having that, those kinds of outbreaks and contamination issues. I do want to take a moment to express the desire of the East Hampton Education Association that all open positions for the coming school year are filled promptly, because we are not going to need fewer staff people in, working in our district. We are going to need more staff people working in our district, both in custodial staffing, we are going to need to have fully staff nursing and admin assistant positions, as well as we have more of a need for paraeducators than we did when we were working in person last fall. And I think part of the reason for that is because the remote model that we're going to be employing this fall is not the same as the remote crisis education that we were doing in the springtime. There's going to be a different structure to the classes that educators are offering, and there are going to be different needs and varied needs of students and educator support by paraeducators who are working in classes remotely with students. So, it is my hope that we can make sure that money coming into the school system is used for staffing positions that will support students and, and make a direct impact on every possible student's learning experience by fostering relationships that are rooted in our communities, and that we're using our money to keep schooling local in East Hampton, employing local people to do local jobs, because that's what makes beautiful educational communities like what we have. So, thanks, everyone.
Thank you. Did the Ellsworths want to speak? I saw a signal go up and then no, so I'm asking, yes?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, I'm a little bit of a lugite when it comes to technology.
Well, you're doing fine.
I don't know how to change it from saying the Ellsworths to my actual name. I'm going to have to get my children to help me with that.
Okay.
So, my name is Michael Ellsworth. I'm the parent of a rising ninth grader and 12th grader. As hard as it's for me to imagine that I'm that old already, but time flies. So, I wanted to first off, thank the school committee, Mayor LaChapelle, the superintendent, as well as Mr. Evans and Ms. Police. You've done an outstanding job throughout the COVID pandemic. I know this has been a very fluid situation, and a lot of times, you're making decisions with not the best of information or not the most complete information you'd like. And I know you're doing your best to make sure the children are all taken care of and get the best education possible under the circumstances. I wanted to speak just to voice my concern. I did send an email to the school committee members on forging ahead with asking for the waiver to not need an SRO for a number of reasons. First off, my concern is that it was only on the agenda one night and voted on that night, that I don't believe gave a lot of the stakeholders the time to voice their opinions on such a waiver. Now, I do understand that the waiver is not a commitment to get rid of the SRO, but I personally feel that leaves the door open, and more likely than not, that that's the direction we'll go if we do get the waiver. And in looking at the Mass General Law statute, it says that the, the commissioner basically has to feel that the SRO does not assist with ensuring school safety. And I did not hear that argument when I watched the replay of the agenda. Most, all of the comments were, I think, at a higher level of, should we have SROs or not as a society? And I think that's a different conversation that has to take place at the state level to affect state law and not at the local level. If the law states that we need one, and they're ensuring school safety, which I think they are, then I think we should have one. I believe the SRO has already probably been part of our school safety programs, our policies, and our plans that we put in place, not only for the high school, but also for the K-8 complex. So, I don't know how we can then turn to the state and say, the SRO doesn't affect school safety when we plan safety around that SRO. I know there was comments made that there is a lack of criminal activity, so maybe that doesn't necessitate an SRO. I would go the opposite way with that and say, that might be because of the SRO. The SRO, from what I heard, is doing an exemplary job. I think you're on the call, Officer Rogowski. Thank you for your service to the community. I think probably he has avoided a lot of issues getting to the police station that would have spiraled or snowballed to a different level. I believe he's probably also taken some children that maybe started to go off track and steered them back onto the right track. Every comment I heard from folks on the call when I watched it was nothing but good things. I think we could probably look at him as a best practice for if we did hire another SRO or other towns. You might want to try to clone Officer Rogowski and try to get a candidate that fits that mold. So, I think the lack of criminal activity may actually be a cause of having a great SRO. It's a poor analogy, but I'm going to use it anyways, is when we put mandatory seatbelt laws in place in Massachusetts, traffic fatalities went down. Years later, we could look at it and say, we don't have a lot of traffic fatalities, maybe we don't need seatbelts. Well, maybe it's because the seatbelts, traffic fatalities are down. I would hold the same thing, is if you have a good SRO, they're probably heading a lot of things off before things get to a level where it becomes a serious issue for that child, the family, and the school district. So, I'll just end there, that I would hope that the school committee would revisit the issue before filing for the waiver and allowing for ample time for the community to weigh in on it. Thank you, and appreciate the time.
Thank you. Okay, if somebody else wants to signal that they want to talk, this might be a quiet night for public speak, because I'm not seeing anybody. I'm going to scroll through one more time. Still letting a couple of people in. I am not seeing anybody raise their hand. So, going once, going twice, and we are going to close public speak. Thank you. So, subcommittee updates. Do we have any updates? Lori, I know you are on a task force. Jonathan, do you have anything from the collaborative you want to?
Yeah, I can just weigh in with a couple of things real quick. Like I mentioned last time, they are sort of going through the same process that we are as far as planning reopening for their specific, you know, smaller programs for special needs communities. So, for the most part, we kind of took a similar phased-in approach as far as the Hack Academy and Mount Tom Academies are concerned, keeping in mind, they're very different than what we deal with. For example, Mount Tom Academy has, I think, 16 students at most at a given time, so it's very, very different kind of thing that they're working on. But, you know, just so you know, we did move forward on those things. One thing that's maybe relevant to us, that I just want to make sure you're aware of, is we did vote that, so districts are going to be receiving money for COVID costs sort of per student, and the collaborative was not sort of in line to get any of that money. So, we did take a vote that that money should follow the students in the districts. This was following some input from, there's at least one superintendent on their, in their finance meetings, and they sort of agreed with this decision. It's not, you know, super substantial, 225 per student, but we figured, you know, they certainly have a lot of COVID costs, and they could use some of that money to follow those students. Another big thing is talking about the budget, which obviously finances have been stressful all around, and it's no different there. But the big sort of point of discussion as we looked ahead to this next year's budget was whether or not the district or the collaborative is allowed to be reimbursed for the PPP funds that they had received. They received that loan at the end of last year. If we do, if they do have those, that loan sort of forgiven, then they're going to be in pretty good shape. Otherwise, they're looking at a very substantial deficit for next year, which is unfortunately going to have to, you know, lead to finding those savings elsewhere. So, that's sort of a really big thing that they're working on resolving in the coming months, and it will certainly affect the way that we're served by them, depending on the outcome of that. But just to all of the educators and whatnot, and I'm sure everybody is sort of already mostly aware of this, but they have a lot of really great professional development that is just kind of coming out in the last several weeks to support remote education and, as well as all of the normal great work that they do around social justice and equity, and really making sure that all students have, the educators are in the best position possible to support all of the students in getting the same great education. So, if anybody, you know, if that's relevant to anyone, certainly check out what they have. I was taking a look at the list, and there's some fantastic stuff. So, I'll keep it brief, that's the gist of it.
Thank you. Shannon, do we have a policy update?
We were supposed to meet tomorrow, and some unexpected things happened, so we're going to reschedule for the 27th as of right now.
Okay.
At five o'clock. We have about 45 items on the agenda that I'm going to split in half, at least.
Okay.
And try to get one more in before school starts, because they're all relevant to school opening.
Okay. Wow, all right. Marianne, do we have a finance subcommittee update?
No, we do not. We're in the process of setting our next meeting.
Okay. And Lori?
No, we haven't met again since our last meeting, but we will be meeting next week. I had a question about the communications group, though, that you met with last week, Cindy.
Uh huh.
Right?
Yes.
Because the last I heard, we were told that you were going to discuss how parents would find out about the partnership groups, and people are asking me, they want to get involved now. So, I'm just wondering, or if Dr. Leclerc knows when that's going to be going out to parents, so we can get interested parties involved as soon as possible. And people are also writing and asking if there will be an opportunity to have a learning center from the start. So, I'd like to be able to report on that, if you could.
Yes, so I'll start with the partnership groups that we talked about. We discussed having a, a class parent in each of the classrooms, particularly at the lower levels, the K-8 level, and that person would be a liaison between the classroom teacher, the building principal, and the parents. And they would also work with the building principal and the school councils. So, once these school councils convene during the school year, they will invite these class parents, these partnership parents, to sit in on the school council meetings. They may not be voting members, but they will have the opportunity to bring the concerns or questions from the parents in their classroom to the school council groups that meet regularly every month. And we also discussed that even if there comes a time when we are able to meet face to face again, one of the factors that people brought up was that sometimes it's difficult to get to a school council meeting because of childcare, different things like that. So, we thought, even when we can meet face to face again, we'll still offer the Zoom option, so that people can, you know, kind of check in from home, if you will, to increase the, the participation and the activity in the group. So, that was the, Cindy, did I miss anything about that? I think we talked about the fact that the principals would include information about these classroom parents and their welcome back to school letters. And they will also talk a little bit about participation in school council and what the purpose of school council is. And the group, the Communication and Governance Group, felt that it would be beneficial to have these parents engage in a structure that's already up and running in the district. So, I don't know, Cindy or Marianne, you're on that group. I don't know if I missed anything?
Well, I just, I, one thing we didn't cover, so I believe you covered almost everything. The principals are going to be sending out information, so any parent who's interested in being a part of that group should contact their principal. But then, the only question I had, and I'm not sure we covered it in our last meeting, when do these councils start? Because one of the senses of urgency from parents was they wanted to be a part of seeing how the learning goes. So, do we have an idea for when those councils start?
They start usually at the beginning of the school year, and they go monthly throughout the school year.
Perfect. And I think that was it. Marianne, did you, was there something else?
I think, you know, based on feedback I've received, I think it's also important for us to recognize and just to sort of really name something as well. So, I think that Dr. Leclerc certainly covered all of the points of this, but we really want to recognize that the parents have really had an incredible outpouring over this summer and looking to engage and looking to be really partners in the educational process as much as we can, open up that process as a school district. And so, I think that one of the things that this idea of keeping it within the council is also really wanting to move that and hold that space where it can become a very collaborative atmosphere. And as somebody who's, you know, certainly had a lot of feedback previously about school councils, this isn't going to be the same school council as the past. This is really sort of opening up that model, really sort of making sure there's a lot of more space for people to be talking, engaging, collaborating, giving feedback, and really being heard. So, I think that everybody understands from the administrative side that that model is not exactly what was in place before, but it is going to be the collaborative model going forward, and that's why we wanted to hold it within the same structure that's already existing, as opposed to creating something all new. But making sure that everybody really understands from the very start that it is a collaborative model, that's going to have interaction and positive reinforcement via everyone being involved.
Yeah. Lori? Lori just muted yourself.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for that explanation, that's helpful. Could you tell me who's on the school council, and also, if there's more than one parent that wants to be the class parent, how will that work? Could there be co-parents? I'd just like to know more about that.
I don't, I don't know specifics of who is on. Every, every school has their own school council, and they normally have an equal number of educators from the building and parents from the building. And so, that may vary, building to building, depending on the interest level. It might be a little bit larger at the elementary levels. It's a little bit harder to get a lot of parent interest at the high school level, for example, so maybe a smaller group. But, so the, in the, they do, I think, have elections at the beginning of each school year. I think Ben Hershey, who I think is on the call tonight, and is usually, when we're, when we meet face to face, he's usually in the audience. Ben is a member of the school council at Maple. So, it's, you know, it's different people at different levels. And the answer for the parents, the class parents, I think I would need to troubleshoot with the building principals. We haven't gone into that level of depth. We did talk briefly last week about the fact that people would probably need to have some availability during the day, and that, you know, that may not work for everyone, not just for participation in the meetings, but also to interact with other parents in the class, or to field, you know, a concern around, that a, needs to be addressed to the teacher, or just to have, be able to have interaction with various people throughout the day. So, I think the principals were going to kind of see what that brought them.
Shannon?
I just wanted to make a comment. Sorry, I was here, I spilled, so I had to get off the computer. But at the high school, they have students involved in their school council.
Yeah, and that makes sense at that level. Yep, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, we can go on to the superintendent update.
Okay, so I wanted to talk to you a little bit about two things tonight for the school reopening update. I want to talk about tents, and I want to talk about the calendar. I think, I'll start with the calendar, because I think that will be relatively painless. We made an adjustment a few weeks ago, adding the 10, or adding some professional development days at the beginning and pushing the beginning of the school year out to September 14th. You approved that. And then we sat down and we looked at a few other changes, and if I could just point them out to you, I believe Sue Colby forwarded the calendar to all of you. So, what I would say is, we added another professional development day on October 7th, because when we counted the days at the beginning, we had added eight professional development days in contractually this year, because of what the commissioner said we're supposed to add 10. So, we need to, we needed to find two more. So, we added October 7th, and we added November 2nd. And then, we looked at the calendar, and because we were starting school on the 14th of September, we thought that the parent-teacher conferences in mid-October were too soon, so we pushed those conferences out to mid-November. And I believe those are the only changes we made. Sue Colby, was there anything else glaring that I missed?
I don't believe so.
Okay, so we're, I think we're looking for you to vote on this new calendar with those prescribed changes.
Do we have any discussion before we vote? Shannon? Unmute, there you go.
I'm just, I'm wondering about the executive session. Are we going to have to talk about that again? Sorry.
Yes. Actually, I was going to, right after we voted on the calendar, I was going to remind everybody, because I should have said it at the beginning, that we will be going into executive session at the end of our regular session to conduct bargaining with the teachers association. We'll do it by roll call vote, and then we'll come back to adjourn. I should have said that at the beginning as my announcement, and I apologize.
Well, I think, if I could just say that I think this is where we are now, and I think it's valuable for parents for planning purposes, and if we need to make a tweak later on, you know, we've done that, every school district makes tweaks throughout the year, the calendar year. But I think this, this gives us, we've counted the days, it's the exact number of days, it does what it needs to do. So, yeah, that's it.
Yeah, that makes sense. We usually change throughout the year if we need to. Any other discussion? Okay, let's have a roll, let's have a motion and a second.
I'll move, we approve the calendar as presented this evening.
Second. Marissa, did you second? Thank you. You were so quiet. Okay, let's have a roll call vote. Jonathan?
Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Shannon?
Shannon Dunham, aye.
Mayor?
Mayor LaChapelle, aye.
Marianne?
Marianne Goldstein, aye.
Marissa?
Marissa Cray, aye.
Lori?
Lori Garcia, aye.
Cynthia Kuzinski, aye. All right, thank you.
Thank you. And the other thing I wanted to talk to you this evening about was tents. We did a little exploration, if I could just take a few minutes to fill the committee in on where we are now. We did look into Nonna Tuck Park, and for those on the call tonight, I think Nonna Tuck Park, I think it's fair to say, has opened in a staggered manner this this, um, year because of COVID and some aspects of the park have not fully reopened. And so in speaking with John Mason, um, just a few bits of information for you. They currently have one set of restrooms open in the park. That's one male restroom and one female restroom. And I explored Nanatac Park. For those on the call that aren't sure what we're talking about, I explored the option of maybe putting tents at Nanatac Park for students to gather in a, um, outside area. So they have, um, each of the male and female bathrooms, the, the two bathrooms that they have have two stalls in each of them. There's no plan to open any other bathrooms in the park this year. And that's really, um, inadequate to bring a whole classroom of students back plus adults. Uh, the pavilions are not open in the park right now. And there is no plan for them to open this season. Uh, that is the area where the power is. Um, so that becomes a challenge. Uh, there's also a challenge around Wi-Fi in the park, access to Wi-Fi. Um, and John, uh, Mr. Mason reminded me that the park closes to all on October 31st. No exception. Um, we discussed the possibility, um, if we needed to put tents up. The logistics are that there are three of the four pavilions are located near the restroom in question. Um, we could possibly put tents, maybe three, maybe four tents near those three pavilions to, um, run some kind of cord for power. However, there was some concern about vandalism, um, about weather, who would be, you know, who and how would the tents be protected? Mr. Mason reminded me that there are, um, children that have sports teams or just pickup kind of games and activities in the park in the afternoons and evenings. And, um, they are not necessarily supervised. So there's a concern around vandalism in the tents. Um, and they don't have the staff to clean the restrooms. So we would need to provide custodial staff to the restrooms. In addition, I have concerns that if we're in a space like the park, which is not, you know, right next door to a school, um, I don't have a nurse or a building administrator there. Um, unless I relocate someone out of a building over to there. I think it's a safety issue for students. I think our students are put in an, um, open area where other people may come by and we don't know them. I mean, I think other people could access the restrooms. There are concerns related to that. Um, I think it may be a disadvantage for our disabled students who may have challenges, not only accessing the tents, but also the restrooms. Um, and I question whether we need to have counselors or administrators on hand if students become disruptive or misbehave. Um, and then of course, there are weather challenges as well and staffing, you know, getting the appropriate number of licensed educators and support staff there. So I do not recommend that as an option. Um, we have gone back as a leadership team and looked at getting some tents for our school sites. And this is where we are. We're looking at tents, the sizes of 30 by 30. Um, and here are the locations we're considering. Two at the front of the high school, one right by the entrance and one over off to the side in front of the gym, which has a green grass area. Um, one at Maple and one at Center Pepin. They would be kind of in the back area. And there would be none at Whitebrook. It's really a construction zone. The only parking lot we have is kind of a mess. Um, there's not a lot of green space there. So the two tents at the high school would also serve, uh, the middle school population as well. In addition, we're looking at six, um, pop-up tents that are 10 by 10, which we would use for kindergarten screening, Chromebook distribution, whatever other use we needed to come up with. Those tents, between my administrators and, um, some, some tents that we already have in the district, we already have those six pop-up tents. We wouldn't need to purchase those. I'm just telling you about them. Um, how would they be used? We would use all of these tents for testing, assessment of students, class meetings, possibly for one or two hours. An opportunity for teachers to meet in person with groups of students to possibly build relationships and community and to assist students with social emotional wellbeing. Some examples of the use would be, um, band or chorus could use the tent. It could be the staging area for a PE activity. Maybe a kindergarten class could get together for a story or to do some activity together. The counselors, um, have expressed an interest in using it, maybe for friendship group activities, maybe for college type activities with students, help, helping high school students with college essays, that sort of thing. The challenges, of course, are locating the tents for purchase. We're looking to purchase four 30 by 30 tents. Dale is on it. It would be at a cost of approximately nine to $10,000 total. And then we would need to purchase some kind of storage, um, box or something to store the tents in, um, for the spring. So, uh, that would be my recommendation, that that's where we start with the tents. I would say, I, I believe Lori asked this question. If she didn't, she's going to, um, about if we're ready to go with this on September 14th. I think that is pending impact bargaining. You know, we're in the midst of bargaining and, you know, there are some, some decisions that are beyond my control. So if we can get the tents, um, which Dale feels that she's on the hunt for them right now. And if we can purchase them, we will purchase them in a very expedient manner. And then it will be up to see how negotiations go, to see if we can staff them.
Lori? After Leclerc, I actually, before asking any questions, I just wanted to applaud you and your team for taking this idea and going forward with it. It is so encouraging to be on a school committee in this district. It is so heartwarming to know that we are doing everything that we can. And I really thank you. I know how much time it is. I know that it's an expense. We're listening to everybody and you're listening to us. And I, I really thank you for that. So, and I thank the administrators for even being willing to do it. And thank you.
Thank you.
So, um, I'm really glad that we're looking at getting four tents, but when you and I talked, I really think we can fit more in. Um, I think we can fit more than two at the high school. And I would, um, you know, I think that some of us would be willing to, at least relook at where we might be able to do that and not interfere with parking. I know I was, um, I know we have to stay away from houses. And, um, we have to leave enough parking because parking is, uh, at a minimum at some of the schools. But I think at the high school, we have a little bit more, um, freedom. And I think if we squeezed a few more tents in, it would be well worth it. And that's where I'm really hoping for. The other thing, I have a question. We had talked about not having a tent at Whitebrook. And I, I agree, there's a, there's a whole section that is all a construction zone. But is there no space to the back and to the right of the school?
No, not really. Nope. I mean, we have to keep a fire lane.
Correct.
There really is no space and it's very, it, you know, the outside is loud.
That I agree. So Maren, you were going to say something about that?
Well, I guess my question, so the, the plan for, and this is only when students are actually in school, but the plan is to have mask breaks and such, right?
Right, yes.
And for us to be able to do that in the wintertime, um, you know, which is fall, early winter is when we're going to be potentially in school if that all unfolds. To have some sort of weather protection for that to happen outside, I think is needed. And so I, I think we do need to look at some space. There is the space that's, you know, uh, directly south of the building. Um, it's not large. I agree, especially if you're having a fire lane around that side of it. You couldn't fill that whole tent, the space of the tent that's, um, on the south side of the building and to where the parking lot abuts that area. But I think we do probably need to look at some, but some tent there, um, that maybe it's only a 20 by 20 or something, but that offers outside protection for that school.
Maren, uh, we would not plan on using these tents in the winter. These would be packed away. We have been advised that, you know, number one, in our schools, we need a place to move snow. And so, um, for example, at Maple, we can't have a tent out and also pave back there. You can't, both can't exist, um, or plow, I should say, number one. So, um, snow becomes an issue. And number two, um, these are just not going to withstand the winter elements.
I, I would still say there's a large part of time where we're going to get cold drizzle and such as that, that would make it uncomfortable for students to be outside, that we're not dealing with snow quite yet. The months of, you know, November, December are going to be cold times to be outside if there's nothing protecting people from the elements, considering what our students are used to. Um, and so I still would say, let's, I would suggest back to you guys to look a little bit more at that as options of how to manage outdoor time for students. Um, not before, before snow comes. I agree with knowledge that, but snow is unfortunately not as much here as it used to be. Um, and there's going to be a lot more time where there's going to be cold drizzle out there, uh, that we should be looking at some sort of covered areas. There's nothing, there's no covered spaces at Whitebrook.
Right.
So the ability to have something there that allows students to step outside and have some outside time, um, I do think is important. So some, you know, I understand snow, but let's, let's consider those sort of shoulder months where there's not going to be snow and ice that we need to still give people time to be outside.
Right. And, and I agree. I think that, um, if we can squeeze out some space in that section, um, i- if all we do is use it for mask breaks for special populations when they come into school, and they will be receiving services, they are going to need a mask break. I think that it gives us more flexibility. As far as storage, um, I touched base, um, a little bit. We at, um, at my school district have a really, um, uh, significant, um, shortage of storage places. So one of the things we did is we got a railroad train car, an old one. And our art class painted it and it was behind the school. It's beautiful with a great mural on it. And that's where all those extra things that we couldn't put away. So I agree, we have a storage issue with tents. But here's my thinking. I think we're going to use tents in the fall and I think we're going to use them in the spring. So it's, it's worth it to us to get them, figure out a place to store them. And it is money that we can use through the CARES Act. And then if we have to sell them later on, we sell them as surplus when we don't need them. But they'll have given us options in the spring and the fall. And I really, I, I, I can't stress it enough. I think in the spring, we're going to be using them. But we're going to want as many as possible. Um, so I would think that we should just really look at squeezing out as much, um, area as we can. I like the start of four with six pop-ups, but I think I'd like to put one at Whitebrook. Um, and I'd like to squeeze one or two more, I think we can, at, um, the high school. And I'd like everybody to just look at that. Um, if it turns out it's impossible, it's impossible. But I want us to try to do the most that we can because I really honestly believe, and, and you guys can tell me if I'm wrong, I believe we're going to use them in the spring. And I think we're going to, they're going to end up being a godsend. And if we don't do it, everybody's going to buy them all and we won't have them. So.
Yeah. So we're, we're pursuing this and I would say that, um, the pop-up, the, the six 10 by 10 pop-ups that we would be using for kindergarten screening, Chromebook distribution, we can move those more easily around the district and we could definitely, they're smaller in size, as Maren noted, and they might be easier to pop up at the middle school and just have a place. We can even put a few of them together to make a larger area. But we'll keep exploring. I'll have Larry, you know, kind of walk the grounds over there. It's just, there are challenges with most of the, most of the areas over there.
Yeah, but, but even, even a mask break, even if it was noisy, I think it would be, I, it would be great. And I'm, I'm really excited that we're making progress on the tent front. But I'm just, I'm always going to want more. I really am. Shannon?
Um, I was just curious, with the cost of the tents, do those include sides?
You know, I have sides.
I think they have sides that go down, but you fold them up.
Yeah.
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 That's it. I'm just curious.
We can go into the wedding rental tent business after this, when we don't need them anymore.
All right. And so that's all I have about tents. Are there any other questions about tents?
Lori?
Sorry, it's not a question about the tents, but I was still, um, wondering about the learning centers and if we could have a learning center in the high school, not even thinking about the tents. I just was wondering if.
You know, my, I have a few challenges, um, related to that, that I think, um, you know, we have the, the letter from the mayor that I think, I think Nicole shared with us last week. You know, not allowing the buildings to be reopened right now. So I can't really have a remote learning center, you know, with that letter, I don't believe, you know. So I, I don't want to go against, uh, uh, a memo from the mayor. So I think that needs to be one issue that's resolved. The second issue that needs to be resolved would be that, you know, again, um, I'm in the impact bargaining and I need to staff it. So that becomes another, um, obstacle that we need to overcome. So those are the two main obstacles that need to be addressed before, um, I can move forward with that.
But, but we could put a tent outside and that would open the building up, correct? And sorry, Mira, I saw your hand after I started to talk. Is that correct? That we could put a tent outside and start a learning center that way?
Possibly. Again, I'd need to staff it for maybe the whole day. I think, you know, we're talking, what I'm talking about with the tents is possibly a, you know, Pat Lennon at the middle school doing a band lesson for a couple hours. I'm not talking about a teacher being there for seven or eight hours of the day at that, in that space. So that's, that brings a different level of accountability. And, um, so, I mean, nothing is impossible, but, you know, then we also have to contend with weather and other challenges. So, um, yes, these are all kind of, you know, things that will hopefully be resolved in the coming weeks.
Okay. Mayor? You're on mute. Mayor, you're on mute.
Okay. I just around reopening of public buildings where, uh, the city, through our procurement office, is wrapping up a request for, um, uh, proposals around testing and also remediation on all of our public buildings. So I, I hope to get, um, some kind of, of report, um, out. It'll probably be after the 14th. A- as far as where we are with each building and if there's something that can happen with different, um, public buildings that would allow them to be opened, um, and we'll go one by one. But, uh, again, right now, all public buildings are, are shut and I hope to have more information. more information within the next month.
Thank you.
And I would add, on top of what the mayor is doing, we are working with Colliers, who is our project manager for the new school, and they're doing, they're going to act as commissioning agents in our buildings to analyze our HVAC systems and our ventilation. And so they are doing that, I think, in the next two weeks.
Excellent. And so we should have that report. Do you have any idea when that report?
I think I may have my report before the mayor, but I, you know, I don't know.
Right. But a pretty quick turnaround time.
Yeah, if there are things we need to do, then we'll, you know, need to take necessary steps.
Excellent, excellent. Anybody else before we go, let the superintendent continue? Nothing else about tents?
What I wanted to give you an update on was the school building. If people have not seen it, Pat Bruff did a video. It's, he did it on YouTube with Burke Gardner, our architect. They narrated it kind of together. They did a little question and answer. If you haven't had the opportunity to see it, it's about five and a half minutes. It goes through the building project so far, including the rotary. And there's a lot of drone footage. It's really excellent. And for those people that haven't had an opportunity to kind of see down at the project, what's been going on, you really should take a look at it. I know that it is out on our Facebook pages. And I did ask to have it put on our school building page of our website. If it's not there today, it should be there by tomorrow morning. So you should be able to find it quite easily. And we're moving right along. We're a little bit ahead of schedule because of, you know, it's been pretty quiet there as far as traffic. And just one more point of information, they'll be putting down the first layer of pavement around the rotary and then, starting tomorrow, so you might want to avoid that area. But I know Jeff Dagg had out information on that.
Great. Yeah, that video was awesome. It was really nice.
Yep, and that's all I have tonight.
All right. It's gonna be a short meeting. We'll be in shock. Okay, so on to matters for action, school payroll?
All right, let me get my thing big enough for me to see it. Oh, shoot, where'd it go? No, okay. So I would like to make a motion to accept the school payroll dated 8/13/2020 in the amount of three hundred seventy-four thousand, twelve dollars and forty-eight cents.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote. Jonathan?
Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Shannon?
Shannon Dunham, aye.
Mayor?
Mayor LaChapelle, aye.
Maren Goldstein, aye.
Marissa Curry, aye.
Laura Garcia, aye.
Cynthia Kuzinski, aye.
I'll make a motion to accept the accounts payable dated 8/13/2020 in the amount of five hundred fifty-four thousand, six hundred forty-four dollars and twenty-six cents.
I'll second that.
Okay, Jonathan?
Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Shannon Dunham, aye.
Mayor?
Mayor LaChapelle, aye.
Maren Goldstein, aye.
Marissa Curry, aye.
Lori Garcia, aye.
Cynthia Kuzinski, aye.
Okay, we're down to other. Is there any other item anybody wants to toss out? Shannon?
I just wanted to ask where we were with the diversity and inclusion of, or position, sorry. Parent family engagement, that's what I meant.
I don't think, I don't have any new news to report since last week. It was posted. I'm not sure when the posting closed. I think Julianne was on this, was on this call. She might have more information than I do. I'm not part of the hiring committee. So I don't, Julianne, do you want to add anything, if that's okay with Cindy?
Yep. Yeah, absolutely. Yep, the posting's up, it will close, I actually think it's closing today. So we will be looking at the applicants, and we have people who are interested in being on the hiring committee, so we have a hiring committee forming, and that's the next step, is to interview, or to select the applicants to interview.
And can I just ask you, would you just tell us, like, kind of the makeup of the committee, not, you don't have to give us names, but I'm assuming because it's a high school position, there's probably a student on the committee?
Yeah, so I think, I think right now we have, we have obviously Ms. Evans and Ms. Wilson. And then I think that there are three parents, one who's a committee member, or yeah, committee member at large, who's actually from the pre-K eight committee, but is interested in being on this hiring committee, and two high school parents. And Ms. Evans and Ms. Wilson are reaching out to students to get student representation on that committee. And we also had two staff who were interested in serving on it as well. So that's, that's where we are. You emailed me, didn't you, Shannon?
I did.
Yeah, you're on the list. You're on the list.
I didn't hear anything that's kind of.
Committee member, as a school committee. Yeah, the posting closes tomorrow, so we'll look at our applicants and.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any idea of the timeline after that? I mean, like a guess, we won't hold you to it?
Of when we'll have the hire done by?
Yeah, yeah.
That is assuming a very smooth interview process. It should be before the students come back. That's our plan, is to make sure that that person is in place to have some professional development and training before the students come back, so.
Perfect, thank you. That's enough of a timeline, so, thank you. Anything else? Do we have a motion to go into executive session?
I move we enter executive session.
Okay, and second?
I'll second.
Roll call?
Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Shannon Dunham, aye.
Mayor LaChapelle, aye.
Maren? Maren Goldstein, aye.
Marissa Curry, aye.
Laura Garcia, aye.
Cindy Kuzinski, aye. We will be returning at the end to adjourn. Okay, so we are in executive session, and I thank you for coming. Let me stop the recording. Okay, we are paused.
Okay. So, and it's just, it's just us, right? I think Russell.
There are still some people.
I think we need, I think we need to remove everyone.
Yeah, I think you should, before we start.
And Marissa? Russell Dupre, our attorney, is going to come in. So you need to be on the lookout for him.
So we have Russell, yeah. We just need to get, yeah. So we got two more to get rid of?
They don't have to be got rid of.
You know what I mean.
Language is important.
You're right, you're right, you're right.
And what about East Hampton Media?
So we should have paused recording.
But are they live streaming the?
They should, they should stop now and then just cover the end when we leave.
Do you want me to put them in the waiting room?
Yes, I will.
Media has, oh, they've put them back in.
Okay, East Hampton Media's back in. We are ready to adjourn. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Move we adjourn.
I second that.
Okay, we'll have a roll call vote. Maren?
Maren Goldstein, aye.
Mayor LaChapelle, aye.
Thank you. The order's all mixed up. Go ahead, Jonathan.
Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Shannon Dunham, aye.
Marissa Curry, aye.
Laura Garcia, aye.
Cindy Kuzinski, aye. Thank you, and good night.
Good night.
Yeah, next time.